Call the meeting order at 7 o'clock. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes or adjustments to the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have the 2020 audit report.
All right, Tom Olinger from ABDO was here tonight. He's going to give our audit report. You probably want it on the screen, don't you? Why?
It's not all upside down.
There we go. Thank you for your patience, Tom.
All right, yes, no problem.
Do you want the mouse up there so that way you can advance when you want to?
Oh, he'll tell me what to do.
Oh, yeah, you can go to the next slide. Well, I'll introduce myself because I see some new faces on the council. But I'm Tom Olinger, the governmental service partner at ABDO Aiken Myers. So I've been working with the city of Janesville for many years, as Clinton pointed out earlier. It was less than what he said.
Yeah, I rounded up.
But no, we'll go through the audit report. You will have the slides in front of you, which should be very similar. So we'll go through at a high level here. If there are any questions on the actual report, feel free to ask at that time. But a few things we'll go through. We'll talk about the audit opinion and what that means and just the overall responsibility of an audit. We'll talk about the general fund results and then all the other governmental funds, the special revenue, capital, project, and debt service. And then we'll talk about the enterprise funds, too. And then what we do is we do some key performance indicators that just do comparisons with other cities your size, just to kind of give you an idea of where you stand with other cities. So we can turn to the next slide there. As far as the audit opinion, we do have a clean opinion for the audit. What we do is we test on a sample basis. So when we do our audit, we establish risk of areas that we would want to take closer look at. But based on that, we take samples of transactions. So we're not testing every single transaction of the city. We test it on a basis and based on risk there and kind of determine if the financial statements are presented fairly. And at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do is present the financial statements in an appropriate level there. And it's not going to be, we don't have to tie it to the dollar, but just within material so that it doesn't impact any decision making of the council. What we also do is we also do some testing on Minnesota legal compliance. So we look at areas of the state statute tied to deposits and investments, dispersments, debt, tax increment, and conflict of interest. There's basically statutes that we look through to make sure that the city complies with those various statutes. And please to note that during our sample testing, there was no findings related to the Minnesota state statutes that we need to look at. We do have a couple findings here. The preparation of the financial statements, this is something that is pretty common with smaller cities. Basically, what this is saying that we prepare the financial statements. Technically, the city should prepare their financial statements and then we basically approve those financial statements. But really, with GASB 34 and all the reporting and all the notes, most of the cities just defer to us to prepare the financial statements. But we do go through it with management in detail and kind of get approval of that. So like I said, this is a common finding there with other cities, but just to note that we did prepare the financial statements.
George, can I ask?
Yeah.
And cities our size, is there any cities doing that internally, not firming it out to you?
No, even.
Yes, you're a pretty good sized city to have the staff do that.
Even bigger cities, it's more cost effective to have us do it than having them prepare it then, too.
Each task.
Yep, it is. So as you probably have seen the audit report in the PDF, it's, you know, what is it, 120 pages, somewhere around that, that we prepare for that.
For the new council, can you explain the GASB?
Okay.
Just brief.
Okay, yep, no problem. So GASB is the governing board that is, basically puts the standards on how we should report the financial statements. They'll come out with new guidance every year that is constantly being updated. A few years ago, they did pensions. This upcoming year, they'll have leases where it needs to be reported a little bit differently on both leases receivable and payable. But basically, they provide the guidance on how we should present the financial statements. Limited segregation of duties with another finding there. We kind of, I have noted in the management letter just some updates that can be done to kind of continue to improve that. But that is something common with some smaller cities. I think we can certainly circle back in the next month or two here and see if there's a few things we could tweak. But the importance of segregation of duties is to make sure that there's checks and balances throughout the organization and the transactions to make sure that, you know, it's kind of a deterrent for fraud out there. So that is certainly something that we can continue to try to improve on with that and we'd be happy to help with that. Once again, kind of common with some smaller cities, but I think we try to continue to improve on that. The last item is the material audit adjustments. So there was a couple adjustments that we made. I think over the years, we've kind of continually improved on having the city make accounting adjustments throughout the years. Capital assets is usually one that gets a little bit complicated as you do projects and being able to divide that between the funds. But between capital assets and additional receivables this year were a couple of the material audit adjustments. And what they may material is it's over a threshold that, you know, throughout the year wouldn't have been presented on the information that the city has received. But it will be in the financial statements. Any questions on some of the findings? Okay, we'll go ahead and get into the audit results here. So the general fund balance, currently, the city has a fund balance policy of about 35%, which is right in line with what the state auditor's recommendation is, is about 35 to 50% with that. That's the whole idea that at the end of December is your high cash point because you just received your LGA, you just received your tax dollars. So now you need that fund balance in order for the next six months to fund those six months. So that's why they kind of make that recommendation of 35 to 50%. So as you can see here, you're right at 51% of next year's budget. As we, we'll take a look at the next slide here. The fund balance did go down, or the percentage did go down, but that was basically because the next year's budget went up because fund balance stayed even for this year. But if the budget goes up, your percentage is going to go down. So the thought is that if your budget's continuing to go up, your fund balance should grow with that budget. So something to kind of keep in mind, you're still within the range of where you're at, but if it kind of continues to go that way, where the budget keeps going up and the fund balance stays flat, you're going to see a drop going off. But still, the general fund's in good shape, but I just wanted to point out that trend. Okay. The overall revenues and expenditures compared to budget, the revenues were up by about $41,000 this year, mainly due to the CARES dollars that came in. There was additional $106,000 of CARES dollars that did come in that wasn't budgeted for. And the expenditures were really kind of right on budget there. Even though there is, what we've seen, what we've seen out there is that the CARES dollars had been spent in a lot of the activity there because it obviously had to be spent. But also, we've also seen a conservative approach with the general fund, not knowing where the state budget was going to be at at the first part of the year. So most of the cities, you know, if you were to look at this, you'd say, oh, the revenues are up, but the expenditure should also be up, but they're really kind of at break even. That is because really during the year, you kind of took a conservative approach on expenditures to not knowing if future years, LGA year is going to be cut because I know the start of the year, they were talking a pretty big budget deficit. So that was kind of why that is for break even. But overall, the fund balance was about break even for this last year. So something to kind of keep in mind, you know, the new council, keep watching that state budget. You know, right now, it's looking okay, but if things start turning, you know, we want to make sure that we kind of keep that fund balance at the appropriate level. Okay. Overall general fund revenues by type, you know, taxes have stayed pretty evenly. I'll note later, we'll talk a little bit about tax rate. That's kind of the big key indicator for the impact on the citizens. So we'll show that comparison. But intergovernmental was up, and that's directly related to this CARES Act that I had talked about earlier. Charges for services were down a little bit and other was down a little bit, which has been common this last year for cities, just because of some of the pandemic issues. Okay. Overall expenditures, you kind of see general government up a little bit, public safety and capital outlay were just up. Those were some of those expenditures that were related to the CARES dollars that were funded by those revenues that we had talked about earlier. But overall, stayed relatively flat compared to the previous years. Okay, we'll turn to the next slide. Okay, we'll take a look at capital project funds. So these are funds that are mainly capital related. We have the 2020 street utility improvements, which was funded by bond proceeds. And this is the remaining amount that is left in that fund, which is about $250,000. So the remaining costs, we'll spend that down for 2021. We have several reserves there, police, capital, fire, street and park and playground. Those are all just equipment fund reserves. So those are the amount of the dollars that are available for funding those future equipment. So you kind of take a look at this going forward to see how your five-year capital plan for equipment replacement is and making sure that these reserves are appropriate as you go through. So normally, you map out the five years of what that is and then you show your cash flows coming in and out to make sure that these funds are being paid out of there. So this is separate from the general fund. And ideally, what you really want to kind of do is set up is that all capital comes out of these funds. And then the general fund is just strictly operational, you know, so that it helps with budgeting and all that. So you kind of keep that in mind, that you have the pot for your capital and then you have your general fund, which is operational. Special revenue funds, we have the, one thing I want to point out is the revolving loan fund does show $400,000 in that fund balance. I just want to note that only $200,000 in cash. So the way the revolving loan funded it says, a cash amount, and then it has receivables, a loan receivable out there, that you're still collecting dollars on as they pay back the loan. So that's going to increase cash going forward in the future, but as of the end of 2020, you only have about $200,000 of that $400,000 available for other loans. The rest of the special revenue funds have stayed relatively consistent over the last two years. So the debt service funds, so these are funds that are funded strictly by taxes and assessments. This is not the utility portion of the debt. So these are all previous projects that we have. As you notice that we have a couple bonds dropping off in 2021, but really, the graph below kind of shows the future principal and interest of those future bonds. And as you see that there's quite a big drop off in 2024. You know, ideally, how cities set up is that when bonds drop off, then you add new projects onto there because really, this should kind of continue to have just a slight downward trend and not no ups and downs. Because really, if you look at 2024, if there's no other investment into the city, then your tax levy is going to drop because of that. But what you really want to do is keep that tax levy flat so that you keep improving, making improvements to the city going forward. So that's something to kind of note that, look at those areas, when bonds drop off, you have the opportunity to keep investing. I encourage you to keep investing because you don't want to come to a point where all of a sudden you have repairs on six different streets because you held off on those repairs and now you're going to have a huge spike in your tax levy going forward. So just kind of have that trend going forward.
And if I could just explain here quickly, too, we are looking at a street and utility project in 2022 and then another one in '25. So as a council can see, the bar chart lowers there towards the right-hand side. We will do a street project in 2025 and that'll, like Tom was saying, that'll increase that a little bit to keep our levy.
In 2023, street project will actually fall into 2024.
Yep, it's usually a year delay on that because you'll do the project and then the principal and interest is paid on the next.
So we're on schedule for that.
Yep.
Utility funds, what we really try to look at is the overall cash flow of these utility funds. So how this graph reads is the blue is the cash receipts that come in and the gray and the green are a combination of operating expenditures and debt service that are coming out. So we really want to make sure that that blue line is above the gray and green line. In these last few years, we've had that increase and we've also had that increase in cash reserves. Remember, a few years ago, those reserves dropped back as we were paying off some deficits that were out there. But we've kept increasing that cash reserve. So what really, kind of how this takes a look at, what we have is we take the next year's debt service payments plus 50% of operations is just kind of a target minimum cash balance for operations, which is the blue line. So now that difference between the 454 and the 186 is really capital reserves for future improvements for that water fund there. So that could be a combination of future debt that will be coming on or actually, you know, capital that you're going to just pay out internally without financing those. So we're looking at about $270,000 that is available for those capital reserves. Same thing here with the sewer fund. The blue line did increase that for the last two years. We're currently at about a little shy of $500,000 in cash. You know, that minimum operations is, you know, about $120,000. So that difference is capital reserves. Now, one thing to mention, I'm guessing these future street projects that are becoming down the road also have underground. So if they have underground water and sewer utilities, a portion of that bond will be paid out of the water and sewer funds accordingly, and that's how the funding is. So you might see that debt service jump up a little bit when those projects come on board. Light and power, same thing that has been increasing over the last few years. We have about $1.8 million in cash with about $540,000 in that minimum balance. Light and power generally has more cash balances in there just because it's more capital intensive and repair intensive that there can be fluctuations up and down based on that. And also, the idea of rate stabilization, too. So a lot of times, those reserves are put into place to make sure that we maintain those electrical rates at kind of a flat type of level.
Now for the new fund.
Okay. Storm sewer fund, so this was the first year with the storm sewer fund. And for a couple of new council members, the idea of the storm sewer fund is that it will take that portion of the project and have the charges pay that portion of the, like the storm sewer project. So most projects have storm sewer, sewer, water in it. So it's really going to take, these charges are going to be used to pay for those costs. And this, you know, in the past, it's been done through a tax levy. The storm sewer is something that's pretty common because it affects everybody. So no matter what the taxpayer is, these charges are going to be used for that versus the exempt, non-exempt type of area. So it's really pulling away from the tax levy and these charges are going to help going forward. So continue to monitor that as projects go up. We might have to, you know, increase rates at some point, especially with the new fund. But taking a look at the mix of the capital, of the debt of the capital, I think we'll just kind of monitor that going forward to make sure that that is being funded. So currently, you have about $30,000 in there for future capital needs. Nursing home, we don't necessarily present on this, but just to note that, you know, the operating dispersments have exceeded over the last couple of years, but cash of $800,000 in there, which is kind of below the average, which was a little bit of an increase. And I believe there was some PPP dollars included in there. That's part of that cash influx for the nursing home.
There was some Department of Health stuff in there, too, that increased for some.
Okay, yeah, perfect. Golf course, a positive because of the pandemic. So that's been certainly a good thing with the uptick in course play. Definitely showed that those revenues increasing there and gaining a little bit of cash flow. As we've noted before, that, you know, as you can see, the last three years, there has not been a cash flow. We've had kind of a levy to balance that out going forward. But for this year, we have about $80,000 in cash there. You know, the one thing to keep in mind that, you know, there could be ups and downs of play, you know, depending on the year and stuff like that, that, you know, kind of keep that going. And then also, if there's any future capital needs, you know, the debt did drop off, but from that, there might be, you know, that means that the assets are getting a little bit older, that there might be some additions that we need to do for capital to keep things up to speed. But certainly, a positive year for the golf course. And I'd probably say this is the first year that I've been able to say that.
You kind of said it last year. We were in the green last year.
Yeah.
Not by much, but.
But I think it was partly due to the tax levy, too, on there. But if you look at the top with the blue versus the, from operations, this is probably the first year we've had operational positive flow. Okay.
All right, next.
One out of 26 years?
Yep. So cash and investment balance, so currently, we are at about $7 million in cash, which did increase this year. I think a combination of those utility funds and, or the enterprise funds is probably the biggest change that we have there. We are also building up a little bit of capital for the future needs there, too. So I think that's certainly a trend in the right direction. Encourage you to keep following your five-year capital plan on how these are being spent and kind of making sure that we kind of reinvest in the city there. But certainly, definitely a positive there. Key ratios, so this is what I had talked about earlier of just the overall of Class IV cities and also in Wasika County, just a comparison. So what we do is we take the data from the state auditor's office and break it out by population. So it'd be a similar population for you guys comparing to other cities your size. So the tax rate, as you can kind of see, is a little bit lower in Wasika County, but a little bit higher than what the Class IV cities are across the state. You know, I think it has been decreasing, which is good. I think the thing that, so what the tax rate does is it takes into consideration the market value of the city. So if the market value goes up, then the tax rate will go down. So I think the thing to also take a look at here is the mix between commercial and residential, too. You know, if there's more commercial, that tax rate drops some. If there's more residential, that stays a little bit higher there, so, which is maybe a little bit more higher on the residential side of things for the tax rate. But it has been decreasing. So the taxes per capita did uptick a little bit this year. So you might ask the question, well, why did our tax rate go down, but the taxes per capita goes up? Well, this is basically because the market value increased within the city. So it spreads it out better and really, that tax rate is how it impacts the citizens. Debt for capita, we did have a new bond issue this year, which did increase that debt. A little bit above the average, but I think this kind of goes hand in hands with the tax rate. So you kind of take that to be a little bit elevated, the debt per capita is there, too. But as you talked about, the next couple of years, it seems like it's in a plan to keep that level. Debt service expenditures have been dropping, so that basically means that your principal and interest that you're paying is becoming less of a burden of the tax. So it's more on the general fund versus the debt service fund. But getting down to the levels where those other cities are at. Last couple of slides here, quick. Current expenditures, we saw it has been increasing, kind of inflationary, maybe a little bit more, but we've seen that with other cities, too, just with the CARES dollars of the additional expenditures related to that. And then the capital expenditures, that will have an uptick this year just because of the projects. And I would bet those two spikes are two different projects that you had that were bonded for.
Yep.
Expenditures by program. So what I'll note here is that this is just the mix of what other communities spend their dollars on. Just because you're higher or lower in one does not necessarily mean that's a bad thing. It's just where your priorities are at on where you're spending your dollars. So general government is up a little bit and public safety is kind of below those averages. Capital outlay, granted, we've had some projects for this last year, but all the other ones kind of fall within line. So just kind of look at this as a benchmark of where other cities are spending their dollars. And really, this kind of reiterates several of the points that I made on the, with the taxes staying pretty well within line. License and permits do, did drop this year. A lot of liquor licenses and various stuff were put on hold because of the pandemic. So we've seen a decrease in that and same with charges for services. I think the last one here was just the overall, where the sewer fund debt service coverage in both cases. So anything over 100% means that you're covering your debt service payments from the charges for services that you have for the water and sewer funds in both of those. As we talked about earlier from the graph, did exceed those amounts there. So nothing to doubt there. But I think that's kind of discussing all the funds here.
Picture of Tom.
Yeah, there I am.
Go back to that bar chart.
That's all right. But anyway, feel free to ask any questions that are there, but that's kind of going through each of the funds.
I was going to point out, too, I like to make this announcement, but for many years, we we all had copies of the budget, or I mean of the audit report, but in order to save a tree or six, we do have a copy available at City Hall if anybody would like it, you know, can certainly have a copy. Or we also have electronically, we can email it to someone if they'd like that as well. So we do have a copy here in the building as required by law.
Got a question on the street improvements.
Yep.
We're looking at next year's street project potentially in two different, a bid with an alternate bid for more. Guess what I'm asking is, we traditionally like to keep under $2 million street projects. If we go into 2.5 or so, how bad is that going to, I mean, I don't know if you have the information in front of you. If you don't.
Well, I, you know, I would say it depends. I would say it will have an impact on the levy going forward, but I guess what you need to take a look at is, you know, if you do both projects together, you're going to save money overall, you know, if it's, if it's the same project. So taking a look at your debt going forward, I think there's ways you can, you can, you can coordinate the bond payments to make sure that they fall in the right buckets of the years, you know, so that maybe they can be back ended a little bit, you know, wait a year or two for a higher principal payment type of thing too. But I guess I'd work with your financial advisor to see on that. But, you know, if the combination of bids can come in cheaper with a bigger project, you know, I think that's certainly something that you look at. And if, you know, mobilization, if it's in the proximity, you know, sometimes you can certainly save money, save money there too.
Just look at all our options.
Interest rates?
Interest rates have been very, very favorable right now. That is more than likely going to change at some point. I don't think it can get much lower, but, but yeah, it's, yeah, you don't know where that's at.
Thank you very much, Tom.
I think you did a great job explaining it. Okay. Well, I appreciate that. If anything comes up throughout the year, or you have any questions, you know, reach out to us. I, I'm always a big, I preach a lot on looking five years ahead. This is a snapshot of right now. The more you can kind of budget and plan five, 10 years ahead, I think that, that's a good, good policy so that you don't have those spikes of up and down of the levies. And I think you guys have worked through that and we can certainly help in any way as that comes, comes about too.
And the training that you offer in Mankato in January is always really good. Andrea and I have been attending that quite a bit over the years, except last year. Kind of, everything was put on hold last year. But yeah, keep doing those, we'll keep showing up.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll keep our fingers crossed that we can do it. So, well, thank you. We appreciate working with you guys. And like I said, I'm, we're available anytime for questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a great night.
You too.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve the audit report.
I'll make the motion to approve the audit report.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Consent agenda, question?
Yes, attached in your packet tonight are the minutes from August 9th, last council meeting. And then we also have the receivables and payables. Nothing really stuck out in the payables or receivables here in the last couple of weeks.
The money did come from Legion then?
Yes, sir. Yep. I was going to tell you when that happened and I forgot. Sorry, man.
That's all right. I'm on a need to know basis and most of the time I don't. Need to know, that is.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public forum? Anybody here to speak through public forum? Come on up to the podium. Give us your name for the record.
Okay, Daniel Seis, 209 West Third Street in Janesville. I am the owner, along with my wife Judy, daughter Lauren Katie, of the Janesville Bowl here in Janesville. And because I only have a few minutes to ask, or to have a few minutes to do this, I'm going to ask five questions and I'd like to hear your questions or answers afterwards. First question, what takes priority, a local ordinance or a state statute when talking about the same license? Second question, I've been in business here for almost 40 years now. In four months, it'll be 40 years. The first 38 years, I was never charged a $25 fee for a setup permit. This year, I was charged $25, but did not receive a permit. I want to know why? Because my setup permit comes from the state, not the city. Third question, I want to know if you think it's okay for a small town city hall to contact a private business insurance company without the owner's knowledge or consent to change the policy dates to match their dates? Fourth question, why did it take until August 13th to get my liquor license when everyone else in town who has a liquor license got there before July 1st? Mine was a month and a half later. Fifth question, who decides if a person or business can, gets to be on the next city council meeting agenda? I wanted to be on the agenda, but was refused by the city hall and the attorney because of a phone call. Those are the questions.
I'm going to.
Questions or answers?
We, typically during public forum, we don't give answers. It's a chance for you to speak. You did raise some questions and I'm going to refer those questions to the, our attorney is here tonight if he's willing.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly field a couple of these. With, and I tried to write them all down in order here. So with regard to your first question, what takes priority? What generally you think has more priority, has more weight, is it a statute or a city ordinance? It really depends. Sometimes it's state statute, sometimes it's city ordinance. Some state statutes say that the city can be more restrictive than the state ordinance. And a lot of times that happens in licensed cases. So it really depends on what you're talking about. If you're talking about can the state be more restrictive on alcohol laws, the answer to that question is yes. The state can be tougher on alcohol laws. They can also be tougher on zoning regulations.
Right.
So it really depends. So I think that's question number one. And it also ties in to question number two, can the city charge a setup fee? Yes, the city can. Again, we can be more restrictive than state law.
I didn't get a permit.
You did get a permit.
No, I didn't. Not a setup permit, not from the city.
Well, you got a liquor license from the city.
Setup permit.
Okay. Well, then that's something that you and Clinton are going to have.
The state issues setup permits. The city of Janesville does not.
I got the permit from the state.
Yes.
But I got charged $25. I don't know. I can't answer that question.
That's why I'm asking.
That's a question that Clinton is going to have to, to field. I mean, but the city can, the city can charge fees.
I didn't get a permit.
And then with regard to the liquor license, that is actually issued by the city. The state, the state has parameters that you get followed, but we can be more restrictive than is actually a city licensing that the city issues. So I think that answered your question number.
The city has it where, why, just wine. I mean, the state has just a wine.
Correct.
As far as being under $25,000, making $25,000. I only made $5,000 last year because of COVID. They said if you're under $25,000 for wine, the city has it if you're under $25,000 for wine and alcohol.
And again, the state can be more restrictive.
Right.
We can build upon the laws.
By the state.
We could basically build onto the state laws. So if it says the walls have to be red, we could say red and it has to be this hue. Like it's, it's, we can only build upon it. Like it's, it's the first and foremost, but we can take it a step further.
Right. Which is what you did. But then I was still forced to get insurance when I didn't need to.
We're going to move on with the next question. This is public forum.
Right.
He's, he's still allowed his five minutes though. I mean, whichever way he wants to take is five minutes. I mean, we're not, we're not this restrictive to. Allowing time for people to respond.
Yeah.
Third question was about contacting my insurance company.
I want to come back up a little bit. I am going to give it one more time. The issue of the insurance that you're bringing up, that really is a question between your, your insurance background. So if you're unhappy with what had occurred there, that, that's really outside of the city's framework being.
Why did they call my insurance company?
HIPAA law, HIPAA law, you should call your insurance company and ask them why they gave information if they shouldn't have. There's nothing we can do about that.
HIPAA have to do with liquor.
And the last question.
Insurance, it's, it's.
It was healthcare.
It's not strictly healthcare. It actually has to do with a lot of different policies. But, I mean, go your way.
Question was how do you get on the agenda?
No. My, I, fourth question is why it took a month and a half to get my liquor license? When everybody else got there.
I can answer that if you want me to. We got it in the mail from the state of Minnesota on, you said August 13th, you got it in the mail. We mailed it that, the day we opened. So we probably got it August 12th. The minute we got it.
We have all documents from everything that happened during that time.
The minute.
So it's not like there was any delay of the city to bring it?
No, I opened the mail, I did 15.
Well, it wouldn't do us any good.
And I said, Sarah, Dan finally got this from the state. And we put it in an envelope, licked the damn thing and put it in the mail.
It was lost in the mail the first time around. Everybody else was renewing it to those dates. If you want us to email, we've got emails from Crystal on that as well. We never received it. They never received it.
Well, I got a call from, or when I called Crystal, who you talked to, she.
I do have it in writing.
She told me that the insurance had, or the city had no authority to contact my insurance company because you do not pay the premiums. I pay the premiums. That's what Crystal said.
Thanks.
Contacted me. I've got that in email as well, if you would like to take that.
Well, and.
Heavily.
It's a good discussion, yeah, but this is not something for a council agenda.
But I wanted to be involved. I wanted to get on the agenda or somebody, but I didn't get help with that.
How the agendas are prepared, is they're prepared by the city? And actually, it's the mayor who decides who goes on the agenda and who doesn't. And believe it or not, it's the mayor who decides who gets to speak and who doesn't. The mayor runs the meeting.
And I'll comment on that, Dan. I did read your agenda request form and I don't think that a city council meeting is a place to come to ball out city employees.
So how do I take care of it?
I would say the best, your best bet would probably be to contact an attorney. Probably your best bet.
I already have, so.
Okay. And you can certainly refer him to ours. Thanks, Dan. Anyone else here for public forum?
Ron Brigger, 115 West North Street. Susan and I moved to Janesville about a little over 16 years ago. And during that course of time, I've attended numerous council meetings with numerous different mayors and council members. And over that course of time, I've seen those councils spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on the golf course, which does not benefit all the citizens of Janesville. Now, which amounts to hundreds of dollars per taxpayer also. Now, this last year, I watched or listened to this council first when it came to the citywide cleanup. Instead of having curbside, which normally did, they decided, let's save some money. So let's have everybody bring their city or their cleanup down to city hall, which apparently did save the city $7,000 to $10,000. Then one, the request was for a disc golf, which would be free to the public, which would again benefit all citizens of Janesville. And they, they were sold to, you have to get local fund, or you have to get funding on your own. Another turned down by the city, which would have helped everybody. Third time, or the third instance was the pavilion. There's been gals out there been trying to raise money for this for some time. And they put in a request for the city for some funds. They were denied. Again, something that would benefit all citizens of Janesville. Last year, I heard golf course did excellent or did good. Finally ended up in the black. And they were still subsidized $20,000. Now this year, I hear now, of course, they're $80,000 up. What I'm, I'm asking now is the council to say, hey, let's cut the cord. We've seen 20 some years of losses out there. And if we can't continue to make a profit, I think it's time we started making some cuts. This has been on the, this has been talked about at numerous council meetings about cutting, so we don't do the tax levy every year. And I, as a citizen, am getting very fed up with, we got all kinds of money to spend to the golf course, which again benefits some, but we can't do things that benefit the whole city. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Public forum?
I'm going to go.
Okay.
Melissa Kapachek, 701 North Market Street. Recently, in the last month, I've actually had quite a few people come up to me about a certain level of respect not offered to them by council. Starting to see it myself, if I'm being honest. We're starting to get a little bit more restrictive in what we allow people to say and do, which yes, there needs to be structure. But I've noticed that there is a level of respect that seems to be gone when we're addressing our residents. We're telling them, when they're asking for more information, I'm not going to spoon feed it to you. We tell them when they're asking questions, oh, we don't need to give you answers, but then refuse them to be on the agenda. There needs to be a little bit more compassion when we are addressing the very people that elected us, whether we agree with them or not. Every single public forum, there's probably been something said that we don't agree with. And that's fine. That's politics. We do not have a right to sit there and disrespect or continue to restrict. When I got elected, a lot of people said, it's nice to see the good old boys club broken up. And I was kind of bummed because now it's starting to feel exactly like what I ran against. So just take that into note when we're moving forward and listening to the very people that elected, even the ones that didn't. Because it was, you run for the whole city. That's it.
Thank you, Melissa. Public forum? Okay, we'll close public forum. Notice and communications?
Yes, Marley got this, I think, last week, a couple of weeks ago. So we put it in tonight's council packet. Wednesday, September 8th, from 3:00 to 4:30, the best of Wasika County are going to be here. Janesville will be hosting the, the business town tour meeting. It'll be here in this room. And so I, we attach the agenda to tonight's meeting. And I don't have it all on the screen. I'm sorry. This is what will be featured. We got Mike and Sean from the bank, Whisties.
And to clarify, you, we want a council president, if possible, at this?
Absolutely.
Yep.
This is our tip. So there, the best four is there, the members of all the communities within Wasika. I'm loud. Thank you, Debbie. It's always our chance to kind of, to our board, to the rest of the cities and communities within the county. Our chance, our chance to show off. So, yeah, getting attendance by council would be phenomenal, you know, to show the support of what we're doing.
Is that a southern saying?
Absolutely.
I learned a lot from her.
I.
Some good, some not so good.
I'm starting to write it down.
You should be.
You should be.
And that was all said without one yawn.
That's all I have for notice. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You have some information in front of you that we received in the mail today.
Mm-hmm.
The league is sponsoring fall forums again in different communities across the state. And these are the different dates are on there for, in case you're interested.
Try and have representation at, at least.
I'm going to try to go to Austin because it's the closest.
Okay. I'm going to try and go to one of these two, maybe the midge or Morris.
Yeah, because that's just the skip, pop and a jump y'all.
I know. But it's always, I think it's a good thing for people to go. I mean, the networking and what you learn is incredible. networking and what you learn is incredible. So, and we budget for it. So we should probably do that.
All right.
Council reports.
Nursing home board, they finally got their audit in and to Clinton to get Tom so he could finish and get the sign of approval on the full audit for the city. There's a plan for next year to make sure that doesn't get delayed again. Of course, it was COVID-related delays. Currently, they have no residents that have contracted COVID. They've had one staff that has stayed home for, and the, they need staff, I guess. Right now, it's because of the lack of staff, they're limiting the census of what we can, how many people we can have in there because we don't have the staff to support. We have the beds, but we don't have the, I think that's healthcare in the whole. We hear everybody's at their limit. It's not that the hospital's at their limit. It's, they only have so much staff that can take care of people. If anybody, you know, looking for a job, please send them to nursing, or Whispering Creek, I'm sorry. Years of saying nursing homes. That's all I have for nursing home. Everything else is pretty routine.
Melissa, do you want to take the EDA?
Um, you can. Yeah.
Okay. We had an EDA meeting last week. Well, we talked about the best meeting. We did talk about our business event, didn't go, we didn't have quite the attendance we hoped for. The meeting, the event itself went well. Everything was fine. We didn't have quite the attendance. We're not 100% sure why. We're going to try to find out why.
Yep.
That was the main thing we discussed. What do I miss, Melissa?
Hmm, um, that's.
It was a fairly light agenda. Community center. We're moving a little farther forwards with a committee or a board to look into it. Ben.
Salabah.
Sabala. He is going to kind of head up the, getting the committee members or whatever. So we'll wait for updates from him.
Yep. And we also talked about a little bit of what we want included in the possible revolving loan fund or grant program in the future. So just touched on it a little bit.
Okay. Jimmy?
They had a park road plaza, or yeah, park road meeting, but I was in Kentucky at the time. So I haven't heard there's anything special about it. They did get their POHP funding was, was authorized. So that's a big step forward for them. I believe that's for the elevator, but it's not popular.
Double A?
Nothing here.
Okay. Administrator reports.
Yes, attached in your packet would be the cash report dated August 18th, which was the last day Andrea was here, I believe. Well, I mean, she came in to do, to do some items that day. So it was able to print out because she knows more about that than I do. Attached is a notice that we will send out to the fire board members, our townships for our meeting that we have on September 13th. Mike, you asked about this a little bit earlier when Tom was here, but just wanted to quickly address the 2022 utility improvements. Mayor Andy, staff, myself, met with our finance guy, George Iletson. He ran and crunched some numbers. And if we were to include the East Grove and East Street onto next summer's project, it will not make a significant huge impact on our debt service payments or on our debt service payments in our utility funds. Reason for that is, just to say real quickly, a previous street project is being paid off. At the same year, we're going to be taking a bond out for this project so that, that levy will stay, in theory, it'll stay pretty close to level. You were asking about that earlier tonight.
We've traditionally always had around $2 million or less. I just didn't know how much adding.
And hopefully that bid, we can get a bid in under lower. That would be really nice or really close.
That was using estimates as the engineering estimates I used.
Correct. Yep, exactly. Yep. And just a couple of other quick things here with the administrative report. Of course, last meeting, we approved reestablishing our park board. So I, I opened up our city code and I copied the portion of our code that identifies a park board. Just want to make three quick points here. Our park board has five members according to our city code. They have staggered four-year terms. They are accountable to the city council only. The park board can work with our planning commission when the planning commission is reviewing new developments, you know, as far as parks and stuff in new subdivisions. But there really are, as the wording is stated in our, in our city code, there is real no other boards that the park board answers to. So they are a subcommittee of the council. Okay?
Very nice.
And have we had any interest in people?
I have not heard of any. I would suggest, I was talking with a couple of you earlier here today, not at the same time. There could be an interest in, you know, just looking to see what we need in our parks and also maybe a dog park. That, that's been a conversation every once in a while over the years. So maybe the park board, one of their first tasks.
That'd be something a nice project for them to start with.
Could look into that.
If we can get a, a park board together.
I haven't looked.
That and that park going out in the north addition.
Yep.
Yeah.
Those are both.
And that's budgeted for for next year. And that's something they can sure help with.
Yep.
I haven't looked yet, but did we put anything on the page or not yet? Okay, cool.
No, I just.
Well, you can probably go ahead and get something out where we're looking for volunteers from our board.
I just wanted you as a council to look at that ordinance. If you have any questions about that, not ordinance, chapter in our city code, ask them now or give us a thumbs up and we'll, we'll go at it.
Okay.
There's one item on 31.073 and D. It says, board will recommend maintenance, beautification and care, but it doesn't say anything about innovative projects or new, new ideas. I'd like to see something like that, that idea put in there that they could initiate a positive construction or improvement of, of the parks. Maintenance, beautification and, and care are not.